I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on August 27th, 2020. And then once again, to comply with Governor Inslee's proclamation, the city council meeting is being conducted remotely. And we're going to start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, Justice for all.
Amen. We got through another one.
Yep, we did it. Given that, we do have an agenda and consent and agenda items. Can I get a motion or is there any changes?
Move to approve the agenda as a end consent agenda as published.
Second.
Then move in second. Is there any discussion? Saying none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We have an agenda. And first up on our agenda is public recognitions and presentations. And first up is the 2020 Excellence in Communication Award presentation. Lindsay.
Hi, sorry, I just got switched over as a participant. So let me start my video. Okay, great. Can everyone hear me and see me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Lindsay. I'm a water resource specialist in the Water Resources Department at the City of Lacey. I handle education and outreach and the kind of a lot of communication pieces for our drinking water, our wastewater and our reclaimed water programs. So each year you probably get those nice little water quality reports if you live within Lacey, which I think all of you do if you're a council. And that's something that I, along with our, the person we have to design it, because usually we don't have an in-house designer, so we go out for that. All the content is created by me or was created by Emily Watson or Watts, who had a position before me. So I'm going to go ahead and start the presentation. It's going to be a little bit quick and short, hopefully. I think it's like three slides, and then I'll just walk you through the water quality report. So let's try the screenshot. Okay. Great. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Excellent. So let me start the presentation. So back in the spring, I submitted our 2019 Water Quality Report for the 2020 Excellence in Communication Award. This award is presented by the Pacific Northwest American Water Works Association. So what is the award and who is the Pacific Northwest, AWWA? So the Pacific Northwest section is part of a larger American Water Works Association. It's membership-based. We have a membership. They conduct a lot of trainings, research. They have a lot of resources for water utilities. They do a lot of the certifications for like our water operators. They have to get so many certs every year. So they do a lot of those trainings. And then they also put out journals, period journals about new, just all kinds of different water, new water things coming up, new water quality testing stuff. The Excellence in Communication Award is presented every year at the annual conference. I was supposed to go this year. Sadly, it got canceled. And I would have given a really brief presentation about our water quality booklet. It's just a, there's different categories for the award. So it's just kind of recognizing the non-technical side of our utilities, which is communication and outreach. So there are different categories. We entered in the large category because we have more than 50,000 connections. So it's stuff like internal communications, calendars, print communications, electronic communications, and then the Consumer Confidence Report, which is why I entered our water quality report. And then we won an award for the Large City Consumer Confidence Report for our 2019. So the Consumer Confidence Report is just another work for the 2019 Water Quality Report. So the CCR, shorten it, love acronyms, the CCR, is an annual water quality report, which is mandated by the Department of Health. So we have to send this to each of our water customers. Some people do it by PDF, but we do it by mail. We just know it reaches everyone that way. And it's mandated for Group A Water Systems, which is like the largest category of water systems you can have in Washington State. Yeah, so it's an annual requirement right now. It may become a different requirement. We may have to start doing it two times a year, but for now it's just annual. It's mandated by the Federal Safe Drinking Water Act. And at a minimum, what it's supposed to do is give you contact information for your water system, the EPA's hotline number, sources of your drinking water, information about water contamination. So we have a robust water quality and water testing every month that tests for all kinds of different things. So if anything that's mandated by the EPA, we would have, and it came back high, we would have to report it in this. But basically, it's just a bunch of test results that show you, hey, your drinking water is safe. Like we have really great drinking water in the City of Lacey. And then it also gives you definitions about regulatory terms, which is really important for water customers to have. But we also add on extra stuff to that. So we always put in stuff about water conservation items, the mandatory watering schedule, and then just some more educational pieces for water customers. So with that, I'm going to jump into the actual 2019 Water Report. So Emily started this where she would put some of our staff on the front page. So this is Puna Clark. If you don't know her, she works, she's a city engineer and she's great. So this is her out in the field, just doing what she does. It's a great way for our water customers to connect faces to the large amount of work that gets done in water resources. This year, we put on Dave, the two of our water operators. So you'll see that one probably, or you've already seen it, if you got it mailed to you. Some really great pictures of the mayor, which I think it's about time to do another photo shoot.
That's not easy to do. Get a good one.
So just a great message from the mayor about, you know, you do all kinds of testing. We have a robust system and we're here to protect your drinking water. And then last year, or in 2019, we just have all of our testing results online. So this is what's, it's just directing them to how they can find all of the test results. This year, I did something different and I put in like some of the test results, because I think it's just more, it's easier. People may not take the time to go on the website. So that's something we added back this year. And then, of course, a big advertisement for the mandatory watering schedule, just to give everyone that reminder that, hey, coming up, you know, you have watering days, but it also advertises that we have exemptions as well. So we're just getting people thinking about that. We advertise our free water-saving kits that starts the first of June, whatever day that is, that first Monday. So everyone can get excited about that and line up outside City Hall without, when there's not COVID and get their stuff. We had to postpone it this year, which was sad, but we have lots of stuff to give away next year, hopefully. In the 2019 report, we talked all about your water tank, things that you should be doing, replacement, flushing the tank, regular maintenance. It's just one component to keep your drinking water safe after it gets to your line and after it gets into your home. So just something else for safe drinking water. And then turning off your meter. So if something happens and you really need to turn it off, we just kind of walk through the steps to do that. We also advertise, you know, please always call operation and maintenance before you do this. Just so there's just not a bunch of, you know, so that we're aware of the situation. And then it also talks about if you're leaving, if you're a snowbird, there's some things you can do for your water to protect it over winter. And then also, we go into groundwater protection. We have wellhead protection areas and where our water comes from. So it talks about, we have seven water reservoirs, 20 production wells, 390 miles of water lines, 3,904 hydrants, 11,412 valves, water valves, which is a lot of valves, and only 28 staff members. So I mean, our staff members are doing a lot of work for the City of Lacey. And then we serve about 70,000 water customers. So it's just amazing the amount of work that gets done by our staff. And then we also added in another, introducing some members of the team. So here we have Justin Bellis and Eric Pack, I think, or Patch. So just a brief description, their pictures, and again, just letting people put faces to the City of Lacey and the Water Department. And then we also have the DSL. So just where did our city, where did our water go? So each year, we have to do a distribution system leakage assessment. So like how much water is not accounted for versus how much we can account for. And then there's regulations about how many, what percentage we have to stay under. And so it just shows you 90% went to our customers, 8% went to leakage of some sort, and then 1% went to authorized city uses. So the stuff that we do at the city that requires water. And distribution system leakage, we actually have a really robust leak detection, like staff. But obviously, they don't catch everything. And this also includes illegal uses of water as well. So people siphon off, siphon off water. And then our rebates, our conservation, our free toilet program, exchange, $100 toilet rebate, and our $50 washing machine rebate that we offer. And then the very last thing that we advertise is just the stream team, how to get involved in water conservation and how to contact us, and also how to contact your city council. So we let them contact you as well. Sorry, that was, seemed really fast. So I would love if you have questions or if you'd like to see something else.
Can you stop sharing your screen?
Yes, I can.
Great. Does council have any questions? Deputy Mayor?
I don't, I don't have questions, but I really think it turned out just lovely. I can see why we got an award. I say we, but you got an award for it. It's excellent. So I'm really neat.
Thank you. Yeah, Azure is our graphic designer who we've worked with, we've worked with for a few years. And we actually worked with her again this year, and she just does really phenomenal work with her. And actually, sorry, here's the award itself. I forgot to present that. So we have this nice little thing. And then we also got mentioned in the Pacific Northwest Water Works Journal. And there's a page and it just talks about the different communication awards. So City of Lacey is on there. So it's kind of exciting.
Great. Councilor Cox and then Councilor Greenstein.
As a former employee of the State Office of Drinking Water, who has looked at many, many, many of these things, great job. And to help underscore the significance of this award, you think about Lacy's up against Seattle, Tacoma, Spokane, you know, much, much larger water systems than us. So congratulations. That's really great.
And I just want to thank Emily Watts, too. She put this content together for this one. And she just did a really good job getting it all together. Yeah.
Councilor Greenstein.
So first, congratulations. Great job. I have one question on the report. So it showed 8.2% leakage. Or is that, is that good? I mean, how does that compare to other cities? Is that a good number?
Yeah, it's actually pretty good. So DOH, I think it's DOH, requires us to be under 10% distribution system leakage for three years. And so that's actually, we're doing really well. So I think you could, from, I forget which year, but you can start to see our DSL start to go down once we started introducing a more robust leak detection kind of system, which is a big thing. Yeah. But yeah, it's good.
Yeah, there is a timer that was really high. It was quite iTunes or something like that. So it's kind of way, come down. Councilor Kunkel.
Yeah, so great job, Lindsay. That's awesome. I just have a curious question. Do you have any idea how many folks take advantage of the rebates?
Yeah, so typically, actually, I just approved the last free toilet replacement for this year. So we have around $17,500 for specifically to replace folks' toilets. And that's for water customers who are on septic system. And yeah, and it just really depends on how many toilets. So they can request up to two. And then it just really depends on which model they go for, because there's like a little bit higher model. I want to say we're right around like 50 folks got new toilets up. And some of those are like two toilets, so quite a bit of toilets. And then we're about halfway on our $50 washer rebates. So we have about $2,000 set aside for that. So we're doing really good. Folks are really taking advantage of it this year, which is great to see.
Yeah, I don't qualify for either. Of all things, I'm on a community well. So yeah.
Yeah, bummer.
Anything else? Well, great. Thank you so much, Lindsay, and keep up the great work. And I walked you a new picture. That's an old one.
I'm excited. New photo shoot.
He's much grayer now.
Yeah, a lot more beard and everything. Yeah, so. So next up under public recognitions is the Historian of the Year Award. And that's going to go to, Aaron's gonna talk about that. Hopefully she's on.
Hi. All right. I'm going to share my screen. Well, hello, everyone. Thank you, Mayor and council members and everyone who's out there watching for helping us to celebrate and kick off Lacey History Month, which we are celebrating in September this year. It was supposed to be earlier this year, but like everything, it's been delayed. Before we get into the 2020 Historian of the Year Award, I wanted to share with you what we are doing next month to share Lacey's history with everyone. So first of all, we're going to be pushing out a number of social media posts with some great throwback photos from our collection, which we hope will give people the opportunity for a little good nostalgia and looking back. I got a couple of examples here to show you of pictures that might show up in the Facebook feed. This one right here is of the Sears store at the South Sound Shopping Center, right when it opened in 1966, just before the city was incorporated. And then there's this picture of Slater Kinney in the early 1980s. I think the Sombo's restaurant was built in 1978, so it's definitely after that. I think the Sombo's restaurant was built in 1978, so it's definitely after that. But I love looking at these pictures where our world has changed so much. The you can, so the picture in the lower right is from Google Maps, the current picture. And so in the old picture, you don't have the trees lining the street or the median in the middle, and there's all those overhead lines. It's amazing how much cleaner it looks without that. But another thing I noticed is that the trees, the big trees in the back of the older photo, they aren't there anymore either. So interesting, interesting changes that have happened along our city. So another project that we are working on is called Collecting COVID, a history project. And we are asking people if they would submit their photos and share what they've been doing during the pandemic. And we will be sharing these photos with people throughout the month. And then at the when we open again, we are planning to use these photos for an exhibit, and we'll also do a virtual exhibit of the photos. So here are a couple of examples of submissions. The one there at the left might be me and my daughter. Point Defiant Zoo, and we have her mask on. And then I love this one on the right of this woman, Kimberly. She's trying to do virtual yoga class and her dog is having none of it. He's like, no, we should be chilling. All right. So lastly, like everyone else, our spring and summer programming was canceled. But we are pleased to share that we're kicking off our virtual history talks programs in September with this first one with Shanna Stevenson, who is an expert local historian, and she is presenting a really fascinating discussion on local activists who contributed to the women's suffrage movement. And then we'll continue in October with a presentation in search of the treaty tree presented by Eric Ebel, who is the Chair of the Historical Commission. So another significant part of Lacey History Month is that each year, the Lacey Historical Commission considers nominations of individuals or organizations who have made a significant contribution to preserve or promote Lacey's history. And you can see here, we have a distinguished group of former awardees, and they've included people like Lori Flem and Ken Ballsley, Richard Jones and Lanny Weaver, as well as all the other really deserving honorees that are listed here. I'd also like to recognize the members of the Lacey Historical Commission, who I hope are in the audience. I can't tell who's there, but to let you know who they are, there's Eric Ebel, Seth Huff, Kimberly Getz, Jeff Crane, Alan Tyler, Sarah 30 Acre, and David Black. And today, the Historical Commission would like to present the 2020 Lacey Historian of the Year Award to Marissa Merkel. As you may be aware, Marissa was the museum's educator for about two years. She left us in January when she got a full-time gig at the LeMay Car Museum. And although you could arguably say that she was just doing her job, Marissa went so far above and beyond what I ever expected or imagined that the person in this role would accomplish. Starting from absolute zero knowledge of Lacey history, she took on the task of learning with complete gusto and enthusiasm. She put together new programming, including our history talk speaker series, the historic walking tour, a guided bus tour, and she began planning our cemetery tour before she left. Even more impressive was that she did all this while we were in the middle of the biggest year in the museum's history. As you may recall, we brought in this little traveling exhibit on Sasquatch, which attracted travelers locally, regionally, and nationally, making our attendance skyrocket. For a small demonstration of what we accomplished, this is our before pictures. Boxes on the left, crazy museum town on the right, Marissa looking scared there in the picture. And this is how it turned out in the end, which was amazing. She had to do so much pivoting, unanticipated pivoting to accommodate this huge surge of visitors that we had upwards of 100 people a day with just her and a volunteer, as well as handling T-shirt sales ad hoc, which we'd never done before. And through all of this, she never complained. She had a smile on her face every single day and an enthusiasm for public history that was absolutely unbelievable. The passion for her subject matter was so obvious if you saw her in action. It was also evident in the rave reviews that we received from customers during her time at the museum. There are reviews on TripAdvisor, for example, that specifically name her as someone you need to talk to if you visit the museum. And our post-event surveys regularly called her out as that really enthusiastic blonde woman, providing excellent customer service and a contagious passion for her subject manner. And it is my, indeed my honor to name her the 2020 Lacey Historian of the Year. And now I would like to invite Seth Huff, who is the Vice Chair of the Historical Commission, to say a few words about Marissa. Hopefully he'll be with us in a moment.
Seth, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can hear you.
Thank you.
Can't see you yet, but we can hear you.
Well, I can't get this to pop on, and I just have some words to say. And I'm a very loud speaker, so she should be able to hear what I'm going to say. It's all about Marissa today anyways. Mayor Ryder, Deputy Mayor Pratt, members of the council, it is my honor to procure a few of your a few moments of your time in tribute of Lacey's Historian of the Year, Marissa Merkel. Last summer, I was able to work with Marissa during the Sasquatch exhibit at the museum in City Hall. Each Wednesday, I would bear witness to Marissa giving tours for two people or 20, ages from newborn to the elderly, for visitors near and far from Lacey, Spain, Minnesota, Indiana, and Mexico. Marissa took them right in and educated them on the phenomena of Sasquatch without trivializing or sensationalizing the topic. Oftentimes, those who came to our, the exhibit would wander into other parts of the museum where artifacts of Lacey's history were on display. Marissa, as an educator historian, shined here, too. She used her limited time and space to educate anyone with a question about Lacey's history. Marissa's knowledge of maps is impressive. Marissa used our replicated Pioneer Maps and flyover maps that reside at the museum as tools to educate the public on Lacey's history. While Marissa's time at the museum was brief, the impact Marissa left will echo for years. Marissa worked with several local children's groups and events during her tenure at the city of Lacey. Through dynamic interactions, she put the hook in them for history, museums, and the heritage of where they grew up. In the future, these children will be visiting our new museum. Maybe these children will be elected to our city council, or their life's journey may take them far beyond this region. But they will always take the knowledge of Lacey's history with them that was provided by Marissa. Members of the council, Marissa represented the city of Lacey in a way that would make everyone on this Zoom call proud. I was impressed with her professionalism, respect, and dignity she showed me, young children, and our older honored members of society. Anyone who came through our museum doors, Marissa educated them if they were willing. She did a great quantity of work in her short tenure, but it is the quality of her effort that we celebrate today. Thank you.
Thank you. Good stuff, good stuff. Aaron, can you maybe stop sharing the screen?
Yeah, and I think Marissa is here, too.
Great. Can we hear a few words from her? Are you on?
Hello.
There you are. Yes.
Hello. Well, thank you for the kind words. Nice to see the familiar faces today. I just wanted to say it was truly my honor. So this is a wonderful award to receive, and I will be watching the new museum project with enthusiasm. So keep up the good work down there, you guys.
Does anyone from the council have anything to say? Congratulations. Deputy Mayor?
Well, I actually went through a tour with her, and she was great. She had my doubting grandchildren really listening and whispering, do I believe it? Do I not believe it? So you did a good job with them.
Well, Councilor Seven?
I did go by the Sasquatch exhibit. It was awesome. I have a T-shirt. Almost ran upstairs and grabbed it real quick, but I didn't want to not be able to mention it and miss my chance. So you know what? It was, it was wonderful to see that transformation. That had, you know, would have took professionals weeks to do. And I don't know how you guys did it, but it looked amazing. And we had lots of visitors there. So it was great, great work by everybody. But historian of the year recipient, like it's very fitting, so.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much. Is there anyone else? Well, on behalf of the city council and the citizens and businesses and everyone in Lacey, it's really an honor to be able to recognize you as the historian of the year. You're joining really good company on that list. You know, and of course, Lacey history for me is a big deal. I'm just a couple of houses down from the museum. And so I definitely yeah, so I definitely know it, living in old historic Lacey. And definitely saw a lot more traffic on Lacey Street during that time, for sure. So thank you for all you've done and best of luck in your next, you know, job. And but we hope you're not a stranger and you stick around, you know, and we'll love to see you there, hopefully when our late new Lacey Museum opens.
Well, you can't get rid of me, so I'll be around.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So on to our next agenda item, which is our youth commissioner in the term. And we're going to go over to Jen.
Hi there.
Jen?
Do we have Sage? Be able to attend?
Let's see.
He'll be joining in a moment.
Well, thank you so much. On behalf of the Lacey Historical Commission, we wanted to sincerely thank Sage Nautsuka for his commitment as a youth commissioner this past school year. I don't think Sage missed a single meeting, and in fact, he showed up every time in a suit and tie, if that tells you anything about the character of this young man. Sage has been having trouble with his mic at our last meeting. So, but Sage, does your mic work tonight?
Unmute yourself there and I think it'll work.
I've been working for him, so.
There you go.
Does it work, Sage? Okay, but we can see him. But he was able to express his gratitude to the commission and let everyone know, planning to pursue a career in politics. He wants to engage and collaborate with others and make beneficial changes to our world. These are his words. His biggest takeaway from being a commissioner was how to make changes at the municipal level of government. And also he described his experience as a life-changing step on his journey to adulthood. So Sage, we certainly wish you the best on your next steps. And again, really appreciate the commitment and volunteerism to the Lacey Historical Commission.
Great. Sage, I'm not sure if your your microphone's working, but if you'd like to say, do you have anything you'd like to say to the council? Yeah. No, can't hear you. Well, that's, that's all right. Well, Sage, thank you so much for your your dedication to the city of Lacey, and we wish you best on your pursuit. I know that you gave a lot to I know, to the city during your term, and you're always enthusiastic. So we wish you the best going forward, and thank you for your, your service. And thank you much.
Thank you so much.
So next is actually public comment on items not on the agenda. For people who are wishing to provide public comment, there is a link that you can go to and sign up. You need to register for that link by 3 o'clock of each council meeting day. We did not receive any public comments or written public comment for this time. So next, we're going to proclamations. Councilor Greenstein?
Just, we did have some written
Oh, did we?
That we did receive, yes.
Okay, I missed that. So that will become part of two, that'll become part of our record that that will be, you know, provided from here on out. So thank you for that. Now we're on to proclamations. And our first up on our proclamation is the National Women's Suffrage Month. And each council member has a little bit to say here, and we're going to start off with Councilmember Miller.
Whereas the right to vote is the cornerstone of our democracy and the fundamental right upon which all of our civil liberties rest and
Whereas the courageous women who fought for the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution on August 26, 1920, deserve special celebration, especially on this 100th anniversary and
Whereas Washington was the 35th state to ratify the 19th Amendment on March 22, 1920, and
Whereas Washington women struggled to get the vote for more than 50 years by writing petitions, lobbying the legislature, publishing suffrage newspapers, and giving rallying speeches and
Whereas after winning the vote and having it taken away several times, Washington State passed an amendment to the Constitution in 1910, giving women the right to vote, thereby reinvigorating the cause and inspiring the national campaign leading to the passage of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution and
Deputy Mayor, you need to turn on your mic.
Thought I did that. Whereas 40 years earlier in 1870, Charlotte Emily French of Thurston County cast the first ballot by a woman in Washington territory. And whereas women today are active in all levels of government and are running for office in unprecedented numbers, reminding us that we are all follow in the footsteps of the resolute American suffragettes.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the city of Lacey, on behalf of Lacey City Council, do hereby proclaim August 2020 as Women's Suffrage Month in the city of Lacey, and encourage community members to learn about and commemorate the efforts of the women's suffrage movement in the role of women in our democracy. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, August 27, 2020. Yay. Yay. And just a little prompt to, I know that we've had several members of our council, Deputy Mayor and Councilor Cox be a big part of this Women's Suffrage Month. And they've gone to our Star Lacey Depot that we have recently recreated and was out there with signs all dressed up. And I know there's a lot of cars and people honking. So I just wanted to personally thank you guys, the former Councilor Linda Zeman as well, who participated in that. Aaron, you, is Aaron still online? Or do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, I'm here. I would like to add that we have a wonderful suffrage exhibit that we'll be excited to share once we open again to commemorate this really important event. There's a picture. And yesterday was actually the 100th anniversary. So I really appreciate you honoring this really historic event. And I just want to remind everybody to come here, Shanna Stevenson, talk about, get really into the weeds and talk about local activism.
Great.
So I have one more thing to add. Bella, Representative Bella Absu made sure that Women's Equality Day was announced every Aug- August 26. So that's why I was at the post office yesterday, Women's Equality Day.
Thank you. And then now we have one more proclamation.
I wanted to say something, Mr. Mayor, if I may. We also had our first picnic there. Jen can attest to that. Linda Zeeman brought her young boys there and they had their picnic lunch there and it was awesome. And the train playground is all put together stuff. So I just wanted to mention that.
Definitely. So one more proclamation, it's a history appreciation month and we'll start off again with Councilman Miller.
Whereas in 1852, the area now known as the Lacey Historical Neighborhood was homesteaded by an industrious settler named Isaac Wood, who eventually became the first brewmaster in the territory north of the Columbia River and provided the inspiration for Lacey's original name of woodland and
Whereas by 1891, the Northern Pacific Railroad added a rail line through the growing community, which now boasted a sulky racing track, hotel, train depot, school district, platted subdivision and post office and
Whereas in 1891, a post office was established with the unique name of Lacey to avoid confusion with another town in the state and
Whereas in 1895, St. Martin's College opened its doors and on its campus in 1922, KGY Radio received one of the earliest radio licenses in the state of Washington and
Whereas by the 1920s, with the advent of the automobile, Lacey became the well-known became well-known as a resort community over time, featuring 20 lakeside resorts offering swimming, diving, roller skating, dancing and exciting water shoots and
Whereas the city of Lacey, through a boat of its residents, was incorporated on December 5, 1966. And whereas Lacey's Historical Commission, Historical Society, City Council and residents recognize the significance of our community's heritage and
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2020 to be Lacey History Month. Further, I encourage all citizens to join me in discovering and celebrating Lacey's 168 years of history during this month of September and throughout the year. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, August 27, 2020. Erin, do you have anything?
I just want to say thank you to all of you for your great support of Lacey history and of the museum. And it's so great to see the council members going out to the depot to have events there and really embracing the museum and our history. I think it's really important for our community, so thank you.
Thanks. So let's see, next up on our agenda, we're going to skip down to the city manager's report.
Oh, Mayor and City Council, we have a couple of items before you today. First is North Thurston Public Schools' joint agreement. And we have Director Parks and Rec Jen Burbage provide background and explanation on that.
Hi there. Well, good evening, Mayor Ryder, Deputy Mayor and council members. Tonight before you is an updated supplement to the joint use agreement with North Thurston Public Schools and also a related Tom Water School District Agreement. The recommendation is to authorize the city manager to sign the agreements. I'll give you some background and then I'll walk you through the attachments. The City of Lacey and North Thurston Public Schools has had a joint use agreement since 1974, which has served our city residents well for many years. It is to our collective benefit to continue this partnership to provide efficient delivery of much-needed, valued and highly-regarded programs and facilities. The supplemental supplemental agreements have morphed over the years, but there's been no significant changes in the past four years. And that's why for efficiency moving forward, school district staff and Lacey Parks staff are recommending a four-year update rather than every two years. Before I walk you through the attachments, I wanted to point out really quick, there is a typo in the staff report. On the first page, under the fiscal note, it should say, the cost share for NTPS pool agreement remains at $105,000 for future years rather than $150,000. So those two numbers were just transposed. So this has already been corrected in the official record of the staff report. So moving to the attachments, the first one gives an overview of the components within the joint use agreement. So number one, the cost sharing of the three school district pools. Number two, the cost sharing of the school district fields. And then the third thing it identifies is that the district would allow distribution of the Lacey Parks Recreation Guide through the schools, which has been highly beneficial to our families and we really appreciate the ability to do so. The second attachment takes a deeper dive into the cost sharing of the school district fields. So essentially, recreation staff schedules most of the school district fields, although not all of them. We help the school district manage the community use and provide a one-stop shop for customers who book both school district fields and city fields. And we also help balance the use of the overall fields in Lacey between the user groups. As you can imagine, it gets a little bit competitive with a limited number of fields available and lots of different user groups. So our staff helps to maintain that balance in the community. The city takes in the revenue for the field rentals and then pays the district those revenues since the district maintains the fields minus the porta potty fees and the 10% that the city keeps for administration. Of course, the school district has exclusive use of the fields during school hours and for school-related sports and activities that occur after school year. The school-related sports and activities like games, for example, that occur after the school hours. The third attachment outlines the agreement for a pool operation, just like the fields, the pools are for students and student athletes first, but the city staff schedule the three high school pools per evening and weekend use. Some pool programs are city-operated, like lessons and open swim. Some pool time is rented through us, two local swim teams and clubs, businesses and even private parties, although we haven't been able to do much of the private bookings due to lack of lifeguards and that's even before COVID, just with our staffing issues, challenges that we experience. The pool agreement is contingent upon the city and the Tom Water School District executing an agreement, which brings us to the next attachment, which is the Tom Water School District Agreement for Pool Use. And that one is for Tom Water High School and Black Hills High School women program, women's programs. They don't actually have a men's program. That kind of came up at the work session last week, where does everybody else practice? So they haven't had a men's program for a number of years. And then just as a side note, I think it came up, the question, where does Olympia practice? And they are at Evergreen State College, both their men's and women's programs. But Tom Water High School and Black Hills definitely needs the use of River Ridge Pool. And so that's connected to this interlocal. Again, as in summary, this partnership has served our residents very well in the past in addition to aquatics and athletics programs. And really, I should say all programs because we use the schools for many, many things, not just athletics and aquatics, but also day camps and lots of different cultural programs, as you know. But these type of programs really teach skills and offer social interaction and opportunities for fitness and fun. And and also, especially with the aquatics programs, there's a safety component that's really important. I want to make sure, just in closing, to publicly thank North Thurston Public Schools and their staff for being such great partners with us for the community and also thank the Lacey Parks and Recreation Staff for their efforts in maintaining the partnership. Lacey Parks and School District Staff meet at least once a month and we work really closely and collaboratively together. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I would move to authorize the city manager to sign agreements with North Thurston Public Schools for field and facility usage and an agreement with Tom Water School District for pool usage.
Second.
Okay, we'll give that second to Councilmember Conkle. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Greenstein?
I have one question. So why do we have to have an agreement with North with Tom Water Schools? Wouldn't that agreement be with the North Thurston School District?
Well, it's because we schedule the pools. So basically, we're kind of getting control of the pool schedule and the staffing of
So we schedule their use of the pools as well then?
Yeah, that's correct. And yeah, and the reason they're tied together is financially, you know, we're getting 16,000 something from Tom Water School District and that helps offset the 105,000 that we pay to North Thurston Public Schools. So.
I guess the only question is, is how did we come up with those numbers, the 109 and the 16,000?
Well, yeah, so it's it gets reviewed really annually, even though I think technically it doesn't have to be reviewed until we update the interlocal, but we talk to school district staff a lot. And just the fact that it basically with the lesson program, the revenue that we bring in, it barely covers that cost of in a normal year, not a COVID year of the $105,000. And so that's one of the reasons it hasn't gone up. I wasn't here when there was the hike from, I think it was 69,000 up to 105,000, but that was a pretty significant difference. And so it was probably just looked at at that point and hadn't been raised for quite some time. It does get evaluated on a regular basis. It's expensive, pools are expensive. And like I said, I know with the revenues, you know, that pretty much just covers that 105,000. So it seems to be, you know, for the past four years that I've been here, that seems to be a good, happy amount. And you know, we'll take a look at it every year moving forward, but this this interlocal names that 105,000 moving forward as a good amount.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing that it's been moved and second to authorize the city manager to sign these agreements for the North Thurston Public Schools and also the great with the Tom Water School District for the pool use, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed that motion carries?
And so, Council, the last item before you is an interlocal agreement for the Regional Housing Council. This is a discussion we had last work session. Director of Community Economic Development, Rick Walk will provide the background information on that report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. And your consideration night before you is a the final draft of the interlocal agreement for the Regional Housing Council. And the request is for the council to make a motion approving and authorizing the city manager to sign this interlocal agreement up to as a step in formalizing the Regional Housing Council. So as the council is aware, this this Regional Housing Council has been developing over the last year and as response to to figure out ways and new partnerships to coordinate funding, policies and conversations related to the response to not only homelessness, but also long-term housing strategies. The the agreement in the interlocal agreement will be between Thurston County, the cities and the cities of Lacey, Olympia, Tom Water, Rainier, Tenino, Yale and Dakota. So it's a very inclusive agreement. And again, the primary purpose of of the Regional Housing Council is to leverage resources and partnerships through the policies and projects that promote equitable access to safe and affordable housing. Then specifically related to funding a regional response to homelessness and affordable housing through the coordination of some of our existing funding programs, which include the 2163 funds, the 2060 funds, the home investment partnership program, the CHG dollars, the HIN dollars, as well as the coming 1406 and some CDDG funds. And this this all this coordination effort is going to be helped to implement the five-year homeless crisis response plan that the county had adopted about a year ago and also to increase affordable housing options. And as part of this action and signing this interlocal agreement is that by signing it, everybody's agreeing to dissolve the the HS, HHSC or and create this RAC. So everything basically is going to be clean and moving forward. The council was briefed on and this this interlocal agreement had a good conversation at your August 6 work session. One of the things that council requested to be included as part of this interlocal agreement was recognition that the dollars that are funded through the 2060 fund be used for 25% match for the home fund. This is carrying forward an agreement going back to, I think it's 2002, to where those funds were dedicated for providing match for the home funds. And we want to make sure that's memorialized going forward, so that's not forgotten. And it's always been the intent. So that amendment has been made to this ILA and in this final ILA. Other key points of this interlocal agreement is that as the Regional Housing Council develops, they'll develop recommendations on how to utilize those funding programs that I mentioned just a little bit ago and make those recommendations to the board of county commissioners. The board of county commissioners will have final decision on those because they are the judiciary responsible for those funds. And however, if they have a different opinion or would like to modify that recommendation, there is a step in this interlocal agreement where they have to go back and revisit the Regional Housing Council, have a conversation. The Regional Housing Council then consider those those opinions of the board of county commissioners and then make a updated or a formalize a revised recommendation going back. So what it does is really make a step where if the board of county commissioners wants to do something different, there has to be a dialogue. But ultimately, being the judiciary agent, they will have that final say. That is the case for those funds, except for the Human Services Fund. This is the dollar amount, that's the half of 1% that all the jurisdictions contribute to this fund. These are local dollars. And the board of county commissioners through this interlocal agreement will not have the authority to change a recommendation on the use of those funds that's made by the Regional Housing Council. They'll only be able to authorize their expenditures. The other high points is there's the funding strategy related to the 1406 dollars. This is that roughly, it's a local sales and use tax credit that local jurisdictions can divert and use for housing needs. Because we all have a portion of those funds that come into the local jurisdictions, there will be a another interlocal agreement to be negotiated, developed to address how those funds will be coordinated. So that's something that the council will see in the in the next coming months as the Regional Housing Council starts talking about how to be able to coordinate those funds. And that will come back for this this council to approve an ILA. Other pieces of actions of the Regional Housing Council is they will, the Regional Housing Council will need to develop a plan and budget and submit a annual report of their activities to each of the jurisdictions. So that provides a an official communication to all the partnering jurisdictions about the activities of the Regional Housing Council. Also, through this process, all the jurisdictions are agreeing to dedicate a quarter FTE to the effort. That's about 500 hours per year. Also continuing, I mentioned that Home Services Fund, that's that half of 1% sales tax that all jurisdictions are contributing to this effort. And then this will also establish the two specific work groups, the technical team, which is going to be made up of staff of the various jurisdictions. Myself will be representing Lacey on that team and well as a communication team, which somebody from our public affairs will be a part of that team to make sure that there's a messaging and communication around the activities of the Regional Housing Council. So with that, and before I turn it over to the council, I also want to recognize and thank Councilmember Cox and Councilmember Greenstein for their efforts, activities and leadership on the Regional Housing Council's conversations. As this is formalized, they will remain, Councilmember Cox will remain the representative for the City of Lacey with Councilmember Greenstein as the alternate. And I also want to thank Dave Schneider, because as we got this to the final stages, we had to get did a lot of work coordinated with the other legal staff of the jurisdictions to put this in its final form. So with that, I'm available to respond to any questions that the council may have.
Yeah, motion?
I am moved that we authorize the city manager to sign the Regional Housing Council interlocal agreement as presented.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Councilmember Greenstein?
So as I've said in the past in discussion, I think at the work session, I'm going to vote in support of this, but I do want to bring up some concerns that I do have with it. I'm still not entirely comfortable with the the process, the setup of this committee and the fact that it is advisory to the county commission. I have two issues with that. One, I have a problem with someone, a county commissioner, being on a on a committee that then advises the county commission. That's just problematic for me in the way it's set up. But secondly, I think it to some degree is us advocating some of our authority that was given to us by the people of Lacey to turn over tax dollars to be spent by another entity, meaning the county commission. Because even though they do have to come back to the Regional Housing Council, if there's a disagreement for discussion, they do have the final say in the expenditure. So I have a little bit of heartburn on that. I'm going to, again, vote in favor of this, but just wanted to make the council and anybody else who might be listening aware.
Councilmember Cox, do you have anything?
Well, I do. And I want to appreciate Councilmember Greenstein's work on this and his comments on this. This has been a long time coming. This has been a, a long time coming to get this agreement, to get four jurisdictions to agree on anything is really big, really big and huge. I think, you know, we, we have the potential for doing some really great things together that we could not do as individual jurisdictions. And I think we've got a good bunch of people at the table right now. I am very comfortable with the new leadership model that we've just is, is included in this ILA that would guarantee, you know, the cities would have one of the two leadership positions and the county would have the other one. I think, you know, county, I mean, to Lenny's point, the county is the fiscal agent, therefore they are responsible for how these, how these grant funds are spent. They're, they have to track it all. They have to do all the reporting on it. And so I, you know, I think that is what it is. And it's, it's just something, it's, it's just a part of doing business as a regional function. But I think, you know, our council has opportunities here, and I, I really would like to hear from each of the other council members at some point about your ideas that you'd like me to bring into there. But I'm, I'm very excited about this. I think this is, this is a, a big accomplishment to have gotten this far, and I'm excited about the possibilities in the future.
Anyone else? Councillor Seven?
I, I share some pessimistic, pessimistic views and some optimistic views. I think the optimistic ones outweigh the, the, the negative ones, because I think these big issues and, you know, down the later on down the road, like with public safety, as we grow as a community, will have to be at some point taking the regional approach. And, you know, it's, it's hard giving up control, especially with big, you know, issues like homelessness, housing, public safety and et cetera. But these, some of these issues are so big, it's hard and very difficult, if not impossible, to tackle individually. So with that, that's why I'm going to support this.
Anyone else? Councillor Miller?
Yeah, I, I, I think it's great that we can all come together and try to be on the same page about, you know, an issue. You know, the homelessness thing, we've been kicking back and forth from city to city, you know, for, I don't know how many years, but, you know, you see them here and then you see them there and you see them here and so on and so forth. So it just keeps going back and forth. And maybe with a more regional approach, we can actually, you know, stop that from happening. I, I, like Lenny said, you know, to, to give up some of the, the power kind of stings a little bit, but, you know, we will have to wait and see if, if that, if the greater good is worth it. So I'm excited to, to see the results of it. But, you know, the, I think the apprehension is warranted.
Yeah, you know, I, I think I'm, I feel a lot better that there's another step involved. Where if the county commission is chose, choosing to go a different direction, that they have to come back to the, the regional housing council. That step is a new step. That wasn't in there before. And we, we'd see the problems we had, right? Where the, where through, through another agreement, a recommendation was given to the, the county and they chose to go in a different direction. And that ruffled a lot of feathers from all the jurisdictions. And so the fact that this additional step is there, at least they're going to have to explain themselves of why they're chosen to go in a different direction. I do agree that this is of course a regional issue, and we should have a regional strategy. My concern is, is that the city of Lacey might not be on the same page as our, our, our regional partners. And I, I do think we need to have a heart to heart with, with everyone on the regional housing council, at least when it comes down to a few key issues. And, and I don't think we're there right now. And so this is just something that's got, we need to work through. When it comes to homeless in our, our ordinance and how we implement our ordinance compared to Olympia or Tomwire implements theirs. It would be nice if we would all implement our ordinances, you know, uniformly. And that will take some, some conversations for sure. And I, I think we just have a little different view of that than they say maybe the city of Olympia does. So you guys are having your work cut out for you for sure on this. Councillor Greenstein?
Yeah, I would just add to what you're saying, Mayor Ryder, that um, this is just the beginning. I mean, clearly this ILA is, is the beginning, and it took a tremendous amount of work on mostly on the part of staff, but on the elected members as well to even get to this point, because it wasn't easy. The amount of work ahead is, is tremendous, and there are incredibly big gaps right now in differences in how the different jurisdictions view the problem of homelessness and the solutions. So there's a ton of work to be done, and you know, the hope is that we can come to some regional decisions. But, you know, we all, at, at, in the end of the day, we all have to remember that each of the elected bodies was elected to represent their constituents, their, their city or their county and their case of the county commission. And, you know, if we can't come to agreement on some of those things, we have to still remember that as a council, we have to do what's best for Lacey in the end. But hopefully that can be done in unison with our, you know, with our neighboring jurisdictions, because it is definitely a regional issue. So. Obviously.
Rick, yes, sir?
Well, I, I guess, pretty much said, but I just want to offer this is that is one of the key issues that, that we have identified as one of the first steps we need to do is have some common understanding of, of, you know, the legal framework and, and also of standards and protocols and those type of things. So the staff, the technical team, we're meeting yesterday, we are starting to frame up those conversations and move them forward and prioritize them, because those are some of the things that need to be addressed first before you can do some of the, the bigger long-term actions.
Councillor Cox?
If I may, just to the point that the mayor was making about there had been some ruffled feathers in the past. Well, if you'll recall, back in January of twenty eighteen, we, the three cities appointed an ad hoc committee. That was my very first assignment as, as a brand new council member to, to talk about, you know, working together because, because things had fallen apart with the county at that point. And so we were, we've been meeting this, all those times since then. And out of that dissension and ruffled feathers, we, we actually got to the point where we realized, you know, we can't really take this much further without the county. And so we invited the county to start coming to the meetings. And since then, we've, you know, probably in, I mean, it took a good six, eight months to do this, but we were able to bring people together. So out of dissension came agreement, and that's why I'm feeling more hopeful now that it, it's on a good path, and we've got a solid agreement that's going to take us where we need to go.
Well, thank you for that. And you're, you're absolutely right. At the end of the day, the county does hold the purse strings here. We can be, we can complain about all we want, but that is the, that is the reality. And so it's better to move forward with an agreement at least than not have an agreement and then we're all fending for ourselves and they still have the purse strings. So I get that for sure.
And again, if you have a, anybody has heartburn with something, please come to me with it so that I can represent that.
Oh, great. I, I think we can talk a little bit offline about, about some, about something that I would like to see going forward. Other than that, there is a, a motion and a second to approve and authorize the city manager to sign the regional housing council or local agreement as presented. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Now on to our standing general committees. And first up is the Finance and Economic Development Committee, which met on July twenty eighth. And we had several agenda items, and first up was our twenty twenty mid-year financial updates. And as of mid-year, June thirtieth, our, our total general fund expenditures were over twenty seven and a half million or about forty eight point five percent of amended twenty twenty budget. This is a total increase of over two million dollars or two million or nine point four percent compared to the mid-year total expenditure levels of, of, of last year. And as of June thirtieth, our, our total general fund revenues were over twenty eight million, almost twenty eight and a half million or fifty point one percent of the men budget. You know, last year at the same time, the revenues were about fifty six point seven percent of the budget. So you can see a little decrease there about two hundred and, two hundred and twenty two thousand dollars compared to the previous year. Obviously, with impacts of COVID illustrated by our mid-year revenue results, that this is going to be a difficult time trying to predict what's going to happen for our next year's budget. So our staff will continue to monitor the city's economic conditions and indicators and, you know, we'll, we'll do the, obviously they'll do the best they can. One other little thing during this time is that the council did instruct staff to explore creating an individual line item for community and economic expenses. Right now, how this has been reported in the past is under a capital equipment budget line item. And so that's going to be changed and hopefully that will be clear for, for the public when they, when they look at that. Next up was our twenty twenty second quarter investment report. The city's core fund portfolio has out before the investment strategy benchmarked due to an abrupt interest rate decrease due to COVID nineteen, the, the core fund, the net total return for the quarter was point three three percent. And the benchmark total return for that period was point zero nine percent, obviously, very small percentages either, either way. Actually, at the end of the second quarter, though, the city found extra yield in highly rated municipal bonds. That this required using liquid funds, and so the core funds have slowly just been increasing. This is the first time the city has invested in municipal bonds, and it's actually worked out quite well for the city. And likely we found the extra yield by, by doing that. Next on our, our, our agenda was a discussion of a food truck court. Rick Walk provided an update of the depot plaza plans and took a look at that. The council discussed the location and, and then inquired if there was a more suitable site to accommodate that, that plaza long term. And then last item was the amendment to Lacey Miss Code waiver for fees for low-income housing projects, since this the discussion that we've been having for a very long time. And Rick discussed a priority action that identified the city's affordable housing strategy, which is expanding the program that waives fees for nonprofit building, nonprofits building low-income housing to private sector builders that also build low-income housing. And currently, the Lacey Miss Code authorized the state manager to waive certain development fees for community-based housing development organizations such as Haptap Work and Andy or Boys and Girls Club of Thurston County. That is my report for the Finance and Economic Development Committee. Next up is the General Government and Public Safety Committee. Deputy Mayor? Did we lose the deputy mayor?
Deputy mayor's having technical difficulties.
I see that. Well, since I was there, I guess I can give, give the report. So the General Government Public Safety Committee also met on July twenty eighth. That we had a, a notice of public meetings update, separate information regarding the open public meeting next requirements for posting public notices. Currently, the city posts notices on the city website outside front doors of Lacey City Hall. And they also send notices to Olympian, the Lacey Fighter Three headquarters and Lacey Library. And this is one of those things that I think I brought up and would take a look at is, boy, is that the best use for giving out information to public when it comes to public notices? And we thought, you know, can, can we possibly use our city's Facebook and Twitter accounts and to help direct public notices? And so what we, what we've decided to do and it's sort of been internally is that, yes, we'll continue to do the legal notifications that we do with the, the city website and city hall and Olympian Fighter Three and Lacey Library. But we will also do a hyperlink that will do this, that will show these public notices on our social media as well. And if you, the public's seen that, I, it's great to see that comes up on, on Facebook or on the county, you just click onto it and all, all the public notices that show up. So that's worked out really well. Then we had a fireworks update. The chief reported that Lacey Police Department received approximately three hundred calls relating to fireworks this year. Approximately sixty percent of those calls were responded to. They know that there were no arrests made or, or citations issued. And the community members agreed this should be a regional topic, and the chief will work on a, a regional approach with emphasis on that, on a standardized enforcement model. Obviously, this is something that I think we talk about every year when it comes to fireworks and how difficult it is for our police officers to have to, to respond to this. And, you know, as a council, we get, you know, especially during right around fireworks season, we get a lot of emails and phone calls and everything else saying what's going on here. And it is, and as the chief was explaining during this meeting, you know, we're, we're not going to, you know, pay our police officers to be hiding in the bushes seeing, you know, waiting to see if someone's lighting off fireworks, because the only way you can give a citation is if a, a police officer actually sees the person who's lighting the fire, illegal firework. And that is very difficult to do. You know, during this discussion, we did say, hey, you know, this would be, it would be nice if, you know, the, the county would also put in a, a similar fireworks ban that in the urban growth areas as the three cities currently have, that can make things a little bit easier. But the, the chief said that he agrees a regional approach makes sense, but, you know, I, I think as in everything else, it, it takes a lot of, of, of notice and everything else to, because we have such a turnover of people, especially in Lacey that, that live in our, our area that may not be aware of our, of our fireworks ban. And of course, we all know how difficult is to, if you live in Lacey or you live in our urban growth area, there's so many people that don't know where the boundaries are. And, and, you know, I could be in the city of Lacey, my next door neighbor is in the county, and he's perfect, it's perfectly legal for him to fly fireworks and where it's not for me. So this is, this is going to be an ongoing conversation that we're going to have to have with our community. Then we talked about the two thousand and nineteen law enforcement statistics and the chief pride our, 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 our two thousand and nineteen crime, our violent crime and our place, our case clearance rate comparisons. And if you look at it, it's, it's, we are doing quite, quite well. Our crime rate and compared to the state averages, it's all written out. I'm not going to go through each one of them. But the city of Lacey is doing quite well in that arena. And if you're, the public's interested in that information, you know, we can make it available. And that is the report on government, general government and public safety. Next up is the Community Relations and Public Affairs Committee.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Community Relations and Public Affairs Committee met on August third from eleven to eleven forty-five, remote meeting. Myself being the chair with council members Ed Cox and Ed Kunkel Jr. and council member Carolyn Cox. It was one topic agenda. Parks and Recs had an update and Jen Burbage from Parks and Recs Director provided overview of Parks and Recs Department programs. So beginning in March, recreation programs were canceled and park gates were locked. Parks were able to stay open the entire time, but new rules implemented with the COVID nineteen epidemic. In phase one, in early May, Parks and Recs started recovery plan. Parks and Trails opened. The parks were already open, but the trails were reopened. Restaurants, shelters, playgrounds and other group amenities were closed. And, but offered virtual programs, the promoted families playing together, messaging and continuing to social distancing by adding signage through the websites, onsite and social media. And add a keep it moving language on signage and messaging to, to encourage people not to sit and gather in, in, in one area for too long a period and, and create social distancing, distancing issues. Then in phase two, which was mid-June, outdoor recreation involving fewer than five people outside one's household was allowed. Open park rest, restrooms on a winter and limited schedule. And then in phase three, at the end of June, summer registration started July first. Outdoor group recreational Outdoor group recreational sports activities up to fifty people were allowed per field. Recreation recreational facilities at fifty percent capacity or less were allowed. And social gatherings, more than fifty people allowed, reduced further to only ten people. There was a uh change mid-through midway through the 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 month there. Uh they opened the park, uh the skate park, um picnic shelters and other amenities. Um but then it was re- it was at fifty and reduced to ten. Um open playgrounds, uh family entertainment series limited to fifty people. Uh they ran two of the six uh programs uh and out of they ran two of the six programs. And the remaining ones were uh eventually canceled. Uh swim lessons were open with proper uh safety guidelines and updated uh to a family format. And then they implemented park ambassador programs and the museum was open with social distancing as well. Um through the last uh since early March, the cancellations of uh events like were uh. Third of July um fireworks event, Lacy and Tune Summer Concert Series, Family Entertainment Series. Lifeguard programs at Long Lake Park Playground Playground Pals, Teen Camp. Counselors and Training Program, two-day campsites reduced to one day. Some cultural camps and programs, some sports and fitness, all indoor fitness on were were put on hold. Uh August movie nights and history talk, so um. And now uh recent activity at Long Lake Beach was re- reviewed and determined that there were no social social distancing. But uh wearing a mask was uh being uh ignored a little bit. Several calls were made to the Department of Health and and. And then there was an update uh provided on the Rainier Vista Skate Park with the uh tissue uh the up- the upgrade of the skate park. Um anticipated being for August tenth, twenty twenty, which had just opened, um I want to say it was last week, if I remember correctly. Staff will uh advise that Park and Recs has received their trademark, uh put us on your playlist, so that's great. It's waiting for its artwork. And the city has made the decision to expand the team sports. Uh guidance to require players to wear both masks on and off the field. Um staff is working on how to modify all future events, tips and fall programming in order to proceed with them. And I think the city manager has some.
Go for it, Matt.
Well, just to clarify, there was a question about a mask that came in earlier today that that requirement is no longer um in effect. So August one, you do not have to wear a mask when on the field, when you're off the field you do. So you may recall, we put that in place when there's resurgence in covid, um but again, we've lifted that after July thirty first.
Great, thank you for that update. Uh next up is our Utilities Committee.
And that is myself again, Mr. Mayor, the Utilities Committee met on August third from twelve to twelve fifty-three. Uh myself being the chair, uh Ed Cunkel Junior and um Malcolm Miller, council members were present. And it was on the twenty twenty water shortage response plan. Uh Lindsay Fields, who we saw, listened to earlier, uh briefed this on uh the water shortage response plan. Um and it provides operating procedures to implement the city of Lacy's water utilities in event uh of a weather-related shortage. Nat- natural or human caused disaster or other water system operating emergencies. The obje- objective of the WSRP is to establish procedures for managing water supply demand in times of shortage. The WSRP I define identifies the range of demand reduction actions that are available. And defines the mechanisms by which decisions will be made during the shortage event. It is the goal of the WSRP to maintain essential public health and safety services and minimize. Adverse impacts on local economy, environment and lifestyles in the city of Lacy's water utility rate pairs. And uh the second agenda agenda item, which I'm gonna, my phone went to sleep on me, but I have a. Some stuff to help this a little bit with the presentation, just so people can get a better idea. Okay, so is the is the um Terry Cargill reservoir capacity? Um so Puna Clark, who we saw in the picture earlier in in the council uh meeting. Uh pre- presented this to us on June twenty fifth. Um well, yeah, the at a council meeting. So council recommended the Utilities Committee discuss options for incor- incorporating blending and masking options for the Terry Cargill Water Reservoir. And provide recommendations to the full council. Uh the it says thirty foot, but I know it's a hundred and thirty foot tall reservoir will be located at. Four five oh four B in Telco Loop Southeast. Uh Lacy and the elevated water tank will have storage capacity of one point two five million gallons. For use of City of Lacy customers. Staff provided blending and masking options for the reservoir reservoir, including costs and maintenance. So it's important to know that some options were as little as fifty thousand dollars. Um we a- and some were as high as fifty thou- or five hundred thousand dollars, which is. Um you know, again, remind everybody, we're in a epidemic and it's gonna hit our budget, even though we haven't seen it. At crisis level yet, um we have to be cautiously up the, you know, uh aware of um how we're spending our money. Even though I know every one of our us council members values public art and art in general. But um thi- this is uh some pictures of the neighborhood and what what the reservoir would look like. And you can see it's just the it's just a plain white and it blends in rather well. And then I'll show you a couple of, this is a another angle from the neighborhood. Okay, so it's, you know, it's not as bad for as as hundred thirty foot structure. But this is if you were to just change it to the color blue, which we we had lots of lots of discussion on this. But um you know, I think the lot of us thought the white, just the plain white blended better, you could put City of Lacy on there. There's lots of options you can do, put some trees to make it um blend in with the the background a little bit more. But it was very clear in the discussion of our three-person committee that um spending a lot of money in uncertain um times. Um when it you could build it and you could later on down the road do that. That was um pretty much the recommendation of the of the committee to just build it white and blends in pretty good. If we see that we're not having as big a budget impact as we thought we might or will or, you know, whatever happens in the future. We can do s- do stuff um accordingly, when it's probably more proper to and responsible to do at that time. So that was the com- the committee's recommendation to council um to hold off on um any enhancements or or blendings at the moment.
So uh Mr. City Manager, do you do you need a for- formal recommendation at this point? Maybe not really, because right now it's just going forward. I think you'd need a recommendation if if something else was gonna change, right?
Yeah, I think it'd be good to maybe just affirm from the full council, because this issue was discussed when uh it came through its conditional use process for a central public facility. And there was some discussion about it. Utilities Committee um looked at it and their recommendation is to stay the the current course for the base model. So we could at least have that on the record and there's nothing to prevent council at some point in the future. If you feel once it's now built and the neighborhood feels that there could be some additional options, council could always re- relook at that issue in the future.
So before I begin, I'm having really unstable um internet. It keeps drop and Comcast keeps going out, so I'm going to leave my screen blank, but I'm listening and I'll talk.
Sure, uh Mr. Manager and Mr. Mayor, I would, you know, I I would say uh. Councilmember Cunkel and Miller were on this committee and um if they would like to weigh in, that might have some effect on. How where this goes.
Do you need a formal motion or just a thumbs up kind of thing?
I I don't know, I thi- I think right now it's just. I think just uh right now it's going forward as scheduled, I I don't know. I think it just a thumbs up, it it's fine for me, I mean, I don't think. I think we under- we understand, I, you know, I I agree that um it would be nice if. Uh a big water tank could have a little character, but I think that's a wish and not, you know, that that's all it is, is is it's a wish at this point. I let's see, get, let's get it built, let's see what it looks like um and then let's see, you know, we we can just go from there, I don't.
If if I may, Mr. Mayor, um I think it's paramount that we meet peak demand. In in uh peak seasons and that the public safety and and the water quality is is the most paramount.
I think we're fine, it's miss, yeah, um to uh Councilor Cunkel.
Yeah, I I agree with you, Mayor, uh you know, let's stick with the base model. And we can always do the upgrade later if uh if the community wants that from us and if we can feasibly budget the uh upgrade. Uh but I I think it's i- as long as it's serving a purpose and it it's a water tower, I mean. If we, you can only polish it so much and it's still gonna be there and be very prominent. So I just, I don't see the point in in beating a dead horse over this, uh we all know we have a budget shortfall uh on the horizon. Let's just, let's stick with what we know is gonna work.
Yeah. Mr. City Man, I mean, that's good, right? You don't need.
Well, I was just gonna suggest at least maybe we have the record reflect that the council in total agrees with the utility committee's recommendation. We can reflect that in the minutes.
Yeah, fine.
Uh I would add one last thing, um we want our fire hygienists to work properly in time of the need when the fire department puts up to them and. Um you know, so water pressure and public safety and all that is paramount.
I agree, I think we're on the same page. Okay, thank you. Um let's go on to Boards, Commissions and Committee Reports. I'm up first and I do not have a report, Deputy Mayor. Uh Deputy Mayor, do you have a report?
I do, um so our Joint Animal Services Commission um. Was canceled for until September, a lot. Um we talked about a whole lot, but first of all, we did go through a number of during our work session on. Budget scenarios and discussion of whether to continue with a three percent rate increase uh or reduce the amount. Um and because of covid uh nineteen, um what we really found, though, was the. Looking at alternative ratios uh of rate scenarios, um it would only provide modest savings to rate pairs um. For instance, but it would substantially cause losses to the uh shortfalls for lot. For instance, foregoing a three percent adjustment for one year would save a single fam- family residence a total of fourteen dollars and seventy-six cents. For the entire year of twenty twenty-one, uh but it would impact lot by nearly six million. And then just a one of my suggestions to look at uh just doing a six-month um. A rate uh as zero rate and this would save a single-family rate pair seven dollars and thirty-eight cents a year. Um so uh and it would end up, they've already taken some major um. Uh reductions and delaying projects, uh not filling um. FTEs that are fairly critical, but they're going to delay it. Um and so and there's some sixty million dollar major projects on the horizon because things are getting quite old right now. Um they've already delayed um a adding a redundant blower and screen to the Martin Way Reclaim Water Plant. Um but um and they don't think they can delay it any longer than what they did. Because there's a major risk for um of failure that that would be too high. Um so and so then um so we discussed that. Uh the second item um we discussed was an update on the cost of service study, which had been put on hold. But uh now they uh they're going to restart the um study. And then the board was also informed of problems um lot is now having with their property. They already had problems on their Franklin Street and they fenced it, but now they're having problems in front of their building. Primarily the plaza um and to the Jefferson side because of safety issues to. To the homeless uh in the area um. The um they're because of needles, um the the other issue with mental health issues. And um and so staff is getting to feel very uncomfortable because of uh having to deal with this, particularly when. There's been a uh because of covid nineteen, so we're they. We've decided to put a fence in the front and to the other side of the building, like we did on Franklin. Um and then the executive director stated maybe in the future, we need to have something like a more permanent fence. More something a little more glamorous, but right now we can't afford that um. Also, then EPA um took over the TMDL analysis from Ecology over the Deschutes River. And basically EPA had partially dis- partially disapproved Ecology's draft TMDL. Um so there is a comment period now until October seventh and this might affect the RIA thirteen. Um possible Snyder Prairie project of adding reclaimed water if because if um. We can't do any kind of reclaimed water in there because of the uh TMDL um. Analysis um then um that mu- project may be out off of the list of potential projects for RIA thirteen's watershed planning. The business meeting, uh the board approved the contract for the collection system management program update and manhole rehabilitation. And then based on our previous discussion at our work session, we approved the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two preliminary rates. Which we decided to stay with the thirty percent inflationary annual rate adjustment because um. Well, because of what I stated and it keeps the um rate from not fluctuating from highs to lows to highs to lows, which is harder on people. So the wastewater service charge is um forty-two dollars and twenty-three cents for twenty twenty-one. An increase from twenty twenty of a dollar twenty-three. And of forty-three dollars and forty-nine cents for twenty twenty-two. And then the cap- uh capacity development charge is six thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-one cents for twenty twenty-one. And sixty-six uh ten point thirteen for twenty twenty-two. And these are the preliminary rate rates um. Let's see, um let me see if there I missed anything. I think that's all for lot, uh the Olympic Region Clean Air Agency also met met on August twelfth. And the board approved an amendment to the bylaws to make sure we are covered by the Public Meetings Act by using virtual meetings. And we discussed a draft personnel policy concerning reduction in force or furlough. And that will be brought back for approval um next month. We have approved again the rule one point eleven draft action. This is an annual update to the federal regulations reference state. Every time um we have to uh approve this rule every time, every year. Because um the federal regulations, EPA regulations to the Air Quality Act um. The date changes and we have to uh make sure that we agree with it. Um the June and July um. Uh air quality analysis uh read uh good for both months. Although the air quality impacts were noticed during the seven um July fourth through July fifth um. Dates based on fireworks activity throughout the six counties, we weren't the worst, though, there was, I think, um. Um Jefferson County or something was way worse, but we were up there. Uh the ozone levels were high for both months because of obviously because of temperature, but it was not nearly the maximum peak. Um and then Orca had put out flyers and bulletins to educate people um. To not burn trash, which is illegal, but most people know that, but apparently um. The last couple of months, there's been some complaints about people burning trash. And that's my report and luckily, my computer. And that's my report and luckily, my computer didn't go down for the the last fifteen minutes. I couldn't hear what you guys said.
Well, glad you're back, uh Deputy Mayor. Uh next up is uh Councilor Cox.
My only report tonight is on the Intercity Transit Authority, which met on August nineteenth. Um normally I wouldn't report on this item because it's routine to surplus equipment. But what makes this different is, you know, the acknowledgement that. Low income families are struggling with long distance learning or remote learning with the schools closed. And so Intercity Transit Authority approved the donation of twenty seven surplus laptop computers. To the Together Organization for Distribution to Students Enrolled in Local School Districts. And I don't know where we are in terms of surplusing things, but it it strikes me that. If we do have some equipment like that to surplus, we might wanna be in touch with the Northerson School District to see if if we can help out. Some families who are struggling with that. So um we also confirmed the annual transit development plan. Um update schedule and we scheduled a public hearing for September the sixteenth. Uh to receive public comments on the annual report for twenty nineteen. As well as the transportation development plan, which covers the five years starting this year. We had updates on the Equal Employment Opportunity Program. Uh as well as oper- operator training programs, rules of conduct policy for people on the buses. And a new respect the ride campaign that addresses behaviors of riders. Um like Lacy, um there's sales tax receipts for um. May, which was reported in July, was up almost eleven percent over the previous year. So despite having. Drops from March and April, um they're remaining in the positive column, so that's a little bit of a relief there. Um on the kind of big good news front. Um they received an eleven point three million grant through the Federal Transportation Administration's Bus and Facilities Program. To renovate and modern- modernize um the Transit Authority's maintenance building. Um this was the highest awardee in Washington State and one of the highest awards in the whole country, so. That that feels pretty good that that money is coming here. Ridership is um down sharply. Um. There were ninety nine thousand seven hundred and twenty five fixed ridership rides in July. It was a drop of over sixty seven percent from July of the previous year. Of course, you know, it's not surprising. Um this is why they went to a reservation only system. Um that just ended this month. With COVID between people working from home and not riding the bus, between concerns about. You know, exposure to COVID, it's just, it's really um reduced it. And as a result, of course, service has been sharply reduced. Same thing happened with the dial lift ridership. It was about a little over half of what it was a year ago, July. And just finally, um on a note, Lacy note, uh they've been repainting. Our transit center as well as the one in Olympia and the Centennial Train Station. And that work should be done in a in a week or so, so we'll be looking a little sharper there at the transit center. And that's my report.
You, uh next up is Councilor Greenstein.
I have no report at this time. Uh both EMS and TCOM were canceled for the month of August, so I have no report.
Councilor Miller. I am in a very similar situation. I did report on my last uh last meeting that. Uh the two reports that I had, the Thurston Regional Planning did not have one uh for August, but we will be having one next Friday. And uh we will also be having an LTAC meeting uh next Thursday. I reported on LTAC last time. So that's all I got.
Councilor Stedman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um we did not have a meeting for Community Action Council uh this month and. But uh I already reported on the um solid waste advisory committee, but I did want to share. The RFP timeline and it is uh aggressive, to say the least. So I'll put it in perspective. Um so with our utility, our our garbage um service contract is a ten year contract. And the reason for that is so when the contract's awarded, these companies, whoever gets the awarded the bid. Has to, you know, invest hundreds of million dollars, the hundreds of millions of dollars into infrastructure like trucks and tipping trailers. And you name it to move the waste. And so that is the reason for the long contract, ten years, so they have notice of um. Ten years to recoup that money before the contract runs out and it renews every day at midnight. So the ten years in per- perpetuity until we give written notice. So it's ten years, but really it's it go at year seven, once you give notice after seven years. You start working on the RFP. So even in our contract, the way it's set up, we are given three years. To do the work of how we want our RFP to be, you know, uh what what values, you know, recycling and. You know, is it weekly pickup or is it biweekly pickup? In this timeline, it's one and a half years, so they cut it in half. It's a tremendous amount of work, especially um in where we live, where we value uh re- reusing, you know, uh recycling. Et cetera, you know, um. So that puts it in perspective. Uh we 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 have three years. This has given us a year and a half. I would like. Councilmember Cox to comment on, do we, we just awarded a contract for uh ITs uh. Uh with the uh increase of uh the sales tax and so they bought a bunch of infrastructure buses. I bet you, it's been two years almost and I bet you they don't have all their infrastructure in place yet. And if they did, it probably just happened and that's two years. This has given them a year. To get their infrastructure, you know, and with COVID.
What was the explanation on the year and a half?
Um they're saying that all the contractors that are sound like they're gonna bid on it, said they can get, some said they can do it in a month. In a in twelve months and come on, you you. A fleet like that moving three hundred tons of, three hundred thousand tons of solid waste every year. Um that's a, it's far fetched, but that's why I bring it to everybody's attention. It's aggressive. They say it can be done. I'm like, I don't know. It's. If then then why do we have a ten year contract when it could be eight years instead? Right? So. That's my concern. I want to share it with the rate payers and and us and that is my report.
Okay, thank you. Um Councilor Cunkel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the VCB Board met uh August eighteenth last week. And the emphasis on that board meeting was to cover uh how they were handling our budget shortfall. And I must commend Shawna Stewart and her team. Did an outstanding job of finding ways where they can do more with less. And they have even moved their location. Now they are sharing space with uh where the Thurston County Chamber uh resides. Uh so that's uh fairly good news. And uh on a better note, for the Lacy South Sound Chamber, we've been waiting patiently. Uh for a new executive director and we have one. The chamber hired uh Blake Noblock. To be our executive director for Lacy South Sound Chamber. Uh he starts next week. And I'm told that we're going to start uh having some assemblies. Uh in the months of September and we're we're taking baby steps on how do you navigate around that utilizing Zoom. And practicing COVID protocols. So that's great news and that's my report.
Great. Thank you. Well, we made it through again. We've reached the end of another agenda. Uh thank you, everyone. Um and uh we'll have, uh do we have a work session next Thursday, City Manager? Yeah, and so and then um council meeting after that. So anyway, uh thank you, everyone. As always, you keep it classy, Lacy. I'll call this meeting adjourned.